Evening Groveland. It is Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, seven P M at the Town Hall. We have our list of agenda. I'd like to call the order. Motion to open?
So motioned.
Second.
All those in favor? So moved. Thank you. All right. On our agenda. Semi-light agenda this evening. We'll go first up is the Comprehensive Master Plan. We're gonna get an update on action item progress. Did you want me to read through? You've sent us a nice memo that has updates on it. Did you wanna speak to any of them, or would you like me to just kinda read through them and give? I know you're a busy woman right now, so.
I think if you just wanna go through some and highlight some of the things that we've been working on, and then we can try and pull up the action plan if there's anything else that the board would like to focus on for the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so in our meeting packets, there is a memo from Annie. The town Groveland's master plan is approved back in twenty twenty-three. Significant progress over the last fifteen months, several key initiatives outlined. So it talks about the pines, the construction of the skate park, the splash pad, I know we have since been removed, tennis and pickleball courts, recently approved by the town. Oh, that's on the early on. I gotta go to the end. Apology. Part of this section is moving forward the CPC application submitted for twenty twenty-five to construct the trail along Merrimack River and Pines. Obviously, you guys can tell that I have not read this pre- pre-meeting. Skate park is scheduled for construction in the spring of twenty twenty-five. While the tennis and pickleball courts were completed late last fall, early winter twenty twenty-four, unfortunately, due to the budgetary constraints, the splash pad will be moving, we will not be moving forward at this time. So that is the pines update. You can see a lot of great progress over there. We have the Valley Screw Site. Town staff has been working with local, state, and federal representatives, as well as the environmental cleanup specialists to determine a path forward for the feasibility of the site. We are hoping to get a significant update by June of this year. One fifty Center Street. Feasibility study in twenty twenty-three. We are at, the town received grant monies from RFI using information from the feasible study in early fall of twenty twenty-four. The consultant has drafted the REI, and it will be distributed to developers within the coming weeks. Once responses have been received, they will be shared with the Economic Development Committee and the Select Board. The RFI will be completed by June twenty twenty-five. The town plans to seek funding for, to continue with the RFP in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. REI, what does that stand for again?
Request for Expression of Interest.
Okay, so the request for expression of interest is basically, we put out a request to developers, and they can tell us what their feedback is and what the possibility of use cases that they would deem fit for what would best suit themselves as a developer, as well as the town. So that's what the REI is, and you would, we expect to get multiple options back there. V C Memorial Park. We are using CPA funds. Town received monies into the valuation. Final report is anticipated in spring twenty twenty-five. That is for future management and use of the site. Connections to open space. Let's see here. We have complete the street program. Using safe routes to school, to school funding. The town will be creating sidewalks from the intersection of the school, street, Route ninety-seven down Center Street to Atwood Terrace. This project will enhance the access to the Community Trail on one fifty Center Street. We'll also acquire land is also part of that connections to open space. The town has been moving, working with Georgetown, Haverhill, and Merrimack Valley Planning Commission to explore ways Groveland can assist and support the extension of the trail to Georgetown. Another part of this section of the connections. The Community Trail access point to public parking and amenities. And they are, we are collaborating with National Grid, which plans to construct a valve release at the Water and Sewer Department's facility on Main Street. This project will also include the creation of seven parking spaces at the site, conveniently located next to the trail. And then neighborhoods. Implementing the Housing Production Plan and the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. The Housing Production Plan was approved by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities in January twenty twenty-five. Now that has been approved, work on accomplishing its goals can be, can begin. Another part of this section of neighborhoods is funding sources to help produce affordable housing of varying types. Town staff has applied for CPA funding to hire a consultant to develop a housing repair program for eligible residents and establish procedures for creating affordable housing trust to manage the funds generating through the inclusionary bylaw. This has been placed on the warrant for the upcoming town meeting. Is there anything that I missed on that?
Not as part of the memo.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Anything you wanna add to that?
So essentially, when we continue to discuss the implementation of the Comprehensive Master Plan, what document that we're working off of is the actual implementation plan that is part of the actual plan itself. And the reason that you're seeing it broken down the way that it is, is that because that's how it's broken down in the implementation plan itself being Elm Square, the pines, V C Memorial Park, Connections, Neighborhoods, and that's why you see those titles as part of the memo. So what we see when we look at the implementation plan is that we have a action, and then we have the owners and partners that are associated with the action, a timeline, and then a priority, and then the planning elements, whether it be vision and goals, land use, housing, economic development, natural and cultural resources. So there are a few things that were not really highlighted as part of the memo, but things that the Planning Board is actively working on. For example, with Elm Square and the parking, there is an article that the Planning Board heard that was put forward by the zoning board for the parking enhancements, so that we can create more development opportunities for the town center. So that's listed as a priority as part of the plan. And there's a couple of other action items that are identified specifically for the Planning Board. So one of which is the complete adoption of new zoning bylaws, and it also takes a look at the subdivision control law as well. So what I think might be beneficial for the board at our next meeting, as we continue to have this as a reoccurring agenda item, is kinda to pull out that implementation plan and then to highlight the areas that are designated to the Planning Board specifically. And then we can get a little bit more in detail about what the Planning Board would like to do in order to address those action items as identified as part of the plan. So I think that what this really kinda shows is that we're kinda working on this all along anyway. They're just things that are happening here in the community, and this is really an opportunity to take what we've already started and kind of really focus on the implementation plan and pull it all together. So it would be my suggestion that we continue to keep it as an agenda item, and at the next meeting, I'll make sure to have that information. And what we can also do is put together like a little packet, and we can keep that here at Town Hall. So every time you have it, you can either take it with you or bring it back, and we can have just kind of like a binder for each of the board members, so that we can kinda go through it. Because one of the things that it identifies as the top of the list is that we appoint a Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee. As you three know very well, trying to find volunteers is very difficult, and trying to create new committees and get people who also sit on other multiple committees to participate in those committees just seems like it could be a waste of time and effort, so. And adding something to somebody else's schedule, so it might be in our best interest to kinda use the Planning Board as a catalyst, since it was the Planning Board that created this document with the consultant. So that would be, again, kinda coincide with what that committee would essentially do.
Is your idea that the Planning Board would sort of take on the role of that committee?
I think so, unless and until something changes where maybe there's a lot more volunteer interest. You know, you all dedicate your time to multiple different boards, so to then ask you or to try and find others to take over, it might be a little difficult, but the work would not go to waste, because if we're creating a book and we're creating a set action plan and the implementation plan and what we're doing or what we'd like to do to get there, I mean, it becomes too much, or there's more interest, here's a binder, create the committee, and here you go. Like, that's already kind of on its way.
It sounds like it's duplicative to the things that we're already doing anyway, so it's not like it's an extra lift.
Agreed. At this point in time, at least.
I agree. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. You, nothing else?
No, not on that.
Guys have any questions, comments, concerns? Cool. All right. Now we will move on to the Multifamily Overlay District MBTA Communities Three A Zoning. The Town Meeting Presentation. Discuss the presentation that the Chair will deliver at Town Meeting regarding the Multifamily Overlay District Article. So.
And that will be Article number twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Article twenty-five. All right, so I have met earlier with Innis. They are the consultants that we had hired. They've done this in other communities as well. We have a baseline. We've had public, public input sessions multiple times about this. So there's a lot of documentation on our website now for that. What I'm doing is gathering all that information, all of the extra pieces of materials that I have asked Rebecca and Annie to gather for me, to be able to put a presentation together in front of the Board, in front of the Town, should I say. So I'm in the beginning phases of that. We have a memo here that came from Rebecca talking about what, and it's in our packet, so the people at home can see it as well, what the MBTA Communities Act is, penalties for non-compliance. These are just some of the things in the memo itself. The broader funding risks, public safety and the water infrastructure at risk, transportation funding, and the tip implications. It's late. Legal risks, and then a conclusion here. So people can read that online if you want. As far as the slide deck, I wanted to talk about this tonight with you guys to let you know my, my thought process around it is trying to keep it simple to explain. There's a lot of different information out there, whether it's true information, misinformation, however you wanna look at it, right? I'd like to get it all on the table and simplify it and show people what this zoning does, the overlay. I know we've talked about it in here. There's the four of us that are here. We've talked to it ad nauseam, and we understand it. And we hope that a lot of people have followed the meetings and able to see that. We know typically that's not the case. So I wanna bring this, that summary to the townspeople at, at voting. Town meeting to show them that we have done what we feel as though is a due diligence to bring the best case forward. And it's not just a zoning. Whether you agree or disagree that the state should be telling us what type of district and zoning we should put on it, right? That is beside the point. We put something together that we think will best benefit the townspeople based on, on numbers. I'm kind of a numbers guy, so I, one of the things that I had asked Rebecca and Annie to do, pull together, is some of the revenues from a lot of these grants that we've received. And I think you guys have it in the package. It's a spreadsheet at the end. And we could say for the past four years, cumulatively, we have been given by grants or earned, I shouldn't say given, we've earned, and we've, it's all grant money. We all know that it's monies that the townspeople have paid into the state, and we're getting our money back. But I can promise you that there are a lot of towns that don't do this, that don't receive these monies back. And we're lucky that we have an administrator and a staff here that is willing to put the time and effort to get it back. Three point five million dollars in the past four years. That's a lot of money. We're not a town that has a large amount of cash flowing around and extra. I think, I think I heard the other day someone mentioned we had a ninety, ninety-seven dollar surplus. Is that, yeah, right. So obviously, we're not flowing an extra cash around here, and having three point five million dollars in the last four years is, is a huge benefit. And then projected, I had her look at some numbers for projections as well. So year end of twenty twenty-five, we're looking at another one and a half million, and then projected total is what, the three point seven, is that where it's at? One, another one point one. And that includes what we currently know would be removed from programs, right? From state grant revenue. That's things that we know about. With the, and that's what my conversations are going to be, is talking about Milton, and we have other communities who have applied to say, we're gonna fight this, that they've lost. I have notes here again, that it is, the law is constitutional, it's constitutional, and we cannot, we would not win. It would cost a lot of money to fight, and we would likely not win. They've, the S J, the S J C, right? Has already determined that the regulations are allowed. So we, it is in our best interest to comply. The towns that have fought it in the past are now starting to look to comply as well. So there is nobody out there that's saying, I'm gonna fight this, and the townspeople need to know that. So we know ultimately the language around this statue that we've created with, with the consultants. We, that just because we put an overlay on here does not mean that we, it's said and done, and anyone can put in a hundred and ninety-two unit building in this district, right? We have a site plan review that they would have to come through to us if they wanted to put any more than ten units. And I'm gonna show what a unit is. I'm gonna show examples of housing, of what, what a ten unit. We talked about that, fifteen units per acre. There are homes that are all up and down every street that you wouldn't even know that are, that meet that requirement. Like I said before, that part of the other thing is, in this district, ninety-four percent, there is fifteen out of the sixteen parcels already meet the zoning, the no zoning change. And that was one of the reasons why we made the decision we are. Again, we've all talked about this. But I just wanna bring, this is the stuff that I'm gonna talk to the town about, and hopefully, they feel the same way we do, to be on the same path, and we'll go from there. So that is.
Can I, can I ask about the chart one second, or the annual revenue document? The, the way I read it, and I might be wrong, is the last two columns are twenty twenty-five year to date and twenty twenty-five projected. I think you take the bold number at the bottom, and you add those two for what we think we're gonna get in twenty twenty-five total, right?
Two point six, yeah.
So that's two point six million dollars, not one point five million dollars.
Correct.
That we would be, you know, very concerned about sacrificing if we wanted, if we wanted to fight this losing battle to, you know, stay out of the, stay out of the CPA.
Yep.
I'm sorry, stay out of the term of our.
The MBTA.
Right, the Community Act.
Yeah, Community Act.
Right, 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 right. But, so two point six in twenty twenty-five alone.
Correct.
I think we have a twenty-two million roughly budget overall. That's a big chunk to just be playing around with on a situation where, as a lawyer, I have been looking at what happened with Milton. And, and you're right, the Supreme Judicial Court upheld the law as constitutional. Now, there were some administrative things that made them have to go back and go back into, you know, rework things, but the point of the matter is that to fight it, to say, no, we're not gonna comply with this, this act, is inviting the litigation. It's a case we would lose. It's a case that would cost, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars to fight. And there's already, there's already a ruling that, you know, it makes it clear what, what the law is. So, you know, it, it would be a very foolish move to, to vote it down simply because if you vote it down, the state's gonna force you to do it anyway, and it's gonna cost us more in the end.
That, that's the great point as well, that I spoke about earlier in our meeting, that, you know, we had heard rumblings of the possible forcing of this district that the state could do because they have the legal right. And if we don't comply, then they would just forcibly pick a district that they want to, and we would fall under that regime, and we wouldn't have any say at all. So it's better enough for us to have those, those concerns. They did, we talked about, there was a special counsel that was created for this. Haven't heard a lot of rumblings, but that's because everybody right now is in compliance, is looking to comply. So they don't have to. But once they start hearing about people that aren't gonna, aren't gonna comply, I'm sure they're gonna say, let's get that special counsel going back again, and that's, you know, over the last four years, three and a half million. This year alone, just for our community, is two point five. They're gonna take that two point five back, no problem.
But then additionally, not only is it likely that they would take the two point five, or whatever the number is year over year, sometimes it's more, but they would also force the district anyway. So you lose the money, you have the district you don't want, and then you'd have the state telling you where it's gonna be put, instead of the folks in the town making a learned decision about where it should be put.
Yep.
So.
And that also doesn't take into consideration the funding that you don't necessarily see. So for example, for the Community Trail, as you'll see in the memo, we received two point four million dollars to construct the Community Trail. That wasn't necessarily money we received, but money that was spent in our community by the state. If we are found not compliant, we will be, I believe they said that you will result, it will result, result in a five-point penalty for any application to the Transportation Improvement Plan that we put forward. So that program, again, one project, two point four million dollars. We applied for a Shared Streets Program, excuse me, a Safe Routes to School Grant, which is similar under the Transportation Improvement Plan funded by the same source. And what they end up doing is they help you with the design, and it goes through the process, and they help you fund construction. So you're ultimately talking about, you know, a three million dollar project that the sidewalk connection from School Street all the way up to Atwood. And that's a pretty substantial project, and it includes replacement of a culvert as part of a sidewalk project. So it really is a very comprehensive project that is extremely costly. So it's not necessarily reflected in the monies that you see on the revenue side of things, because it's coming directly from the state. And we wouldn't be eligible for those fundings, or we would be docked points in applying for those fundings, which would put us behind other communities. Additionally, one of the later, the later points that were brought to our attention is that the Water and Sewer Department is currently looking at constructing a water treatment facility, moving forward with that. And as such, it is now contingent upon MBTA Three A compliance. Therefore, we're looking at pursuing four hundred, sorry, forty-four million dollars. And that would no longer be an option for us, because we are not compliant. So one of the things that can be a little bit misleading about the revenue numbers is sometimes it doesn't necessarily come into our accounts to go out into projects. Sometimes the state gives us or funds directly the project themselves. And those are larger projects that we wouldn't be able to fund otherwise.
And so not only in terms of like a loan to get, to get the things going, but also the grants that, that the town will apply for to get partial funding, you know, paid for by the state. All that, all that stuff is either penalized heavily or taken off the table entirely, in addition to everything we've discussed about why it's important to comply with the Communities Act.
And also, and the whole point of this is to share with you guys that the thoughts and ideas of what I'm gonna share with the townspeople, because we've already discussed it, but explaining to them that this overlay doesn't mean that anyone that lives in this district has to do anything to their home.
Right.
In the future, if someone were to sell that home, then a buyer could potentially do something, but there are still restrictions. They can't just build whatever they want at any given time, just because they're part of this overlay.
Right, the people, a lot of the people who are against this are not paying attention to the full picture, and they're trying to scare people into thinking that a vote yes on this, on this is a grant for massive construction developments immediately and things like that, and it's just not the case. And so hopefully, these, these meetings that we have, where we've talked about this ad nauseam, where we've beaten the drum over and over again, any, any of the good citizens of Groveland can watch it on YouTube or on Community Public Access. I understand that the town moderator recently had a roundtable that was productive about this. So there's some resources for folks who wanna, who wanna learn more about this, and anybody watching tonight. You know, there's, there's a lot of resources to get yourself well-informed before Town Meeting. So when you walk in there, as one of the hundred or more, hopefully, folks that, you know, are gonna be determining what we, what we as a town do, you'll be really well-informed and understand what's going on.
And, and for anyone out there that may not wanna go back and read any type of, watch videos or read language, feel free to reach out to me directly, and I can, I'll have a conversation about it. I'm open to that as well. So, or, or any of us, I'm sure, right?
Yeah, I would.
Even Town Hall, Rebecca, I mean, anyone, if you have questions on it, please feel free to reach out. We can discuss it anytime. We, we know, I think I know enough about it now that we could talk about it without having to look at any type of documentation, but. Yeah, so we'll bring it forth to the Town, and hopefully, we we've done and brought enough to the table for them to make their educated decision. So I'm good there. Unless you guys have any, and between now and then, if you guys have any ideas or thoughts that you, I should incorporate into the presentation, please let me know.
Jason, did we miss anything?
No, I think he did his research and has put together a very nice presentation.
Thanks. So the consultants definitely stepped up and helped, so. And that's, again, due to you guys as well, reaching out. There's a lot of communities, again, that didn't use that. There was funding that we were able to use to get a consultant to, to help us through this. So that's, it kinda all, it stems back to there, so thank you. I'm good. Unless there's nothing else, we can go to the Town Planner Update.
Sounds good.
All you.
So there's just two items that we wanted to bring forward to your attention. The one fifty Center Street REI update. You had mentioned it as part of your Comprehensive Master Plan update as well, but we went before the Select Board yesterday to share with them the more finalized draft of the REI that we expect to then incorporate with some of the draft amendments that came from the Working Group, which consisted of select member Rebecca Boucher for the Select Board, Angus Jennings from the Economic Development Committee, and then Chris Goodwin from the Planning Board. So they all made comments on the draft. They hadn't been incorporated with the version that was shared with the Select Board, but now all of those comments that were made will be incorporated, and they will now create a story map, which is a very unique and interactive way for developers to engage with the data. So it shows you photos, and then it provides you links, so that you can just press on the link, and you can get to the Comprehensive Master Plan. You can click on the link and get to the feasibility study. And so it has all that relevant documentation, and then it provides you the site context, and it tells you all about the wetlands. It tells you all about the national, the natural heritage and the endangered species in that particular area. It talks about what utilities are in the area, et cetera, et cetera. So now that that has been somewhat finalized, it will go back to the consultant. They'll put it all together, and then we will send it out to developers in the area. Those developers that we know have done developments in other communities in the state of Massachusetts, as well as publish on the Central Register, which is a place where procurement and other types of advertisements go forward for goods and services and things of that nature. So once that goes out, there will be a site visit. The site visit will be scheduled for a time and place, and anybody who had received the proposal is able to go out to the site and view it. They can ask questions and submit questions to the consultant, which will then gather the, the answers to those questions. Those will then go out to those who have the proposal. Then they will be able to submit a proposal if they would like to, and as you stated, it would identify what they think would be, that they would be able to develop in that particular area based upon all of the information that we provided. In addition to the feasibility study that kind of identified what the community would want in that particular area, they don't wanna see massive housing development. They wanna see a more mixed-use type of development. So they would give us a more conceptual idea of what could work there. Then, once we get those proposals, the consultant will then put that into a narrative and summarize that, and they will submit that for a presentation to the Economic Development Committee, which will be shared with boards like yourself, as well as the Select Board. And then what will happen is that the Select Board and the town will decide whether or not they wanna go to the next step of that process, which is an RFP, which is a Request for Proposal. So that's an actual decision as to whether or not we want to dispose of the land being through sale of the property or to establish a ground lease. And so as part of the RFP process, it's a lot more detailed. So it says, we wanna see one building, two buildings, three. We wanna see this. We wanna see that. We wanna see it in this area. We want this. So it involves a lot more coordination effort with all of the relative boards, being the Planning Board, the zoning board, the conservation. It also requires us to figure out whether or not the zone is appropriate, and whether or not we have to change zoning to reflect that, and whether or not we do an. and whether or not we have to change zoning to reflect that, and whether or not we do an overlay like we're talking about for MBTA, but a different kind of overlay. Um, so trying to figure out all those specifics. So that wouldn't happen until next fiscal year. So the goal is that we would apply for uh, a grant using the same source of funding that we did for the REI process, for the RFP process, that will allow us to have a consultant to help us facilitate all of that and help us uh, coordinate all of the conversations with the multiple different organizations that we would need to reach out to. Um, so once we do get the final proposal, I am going to send that over in the, the link in the story map form, and I'll send that over to you all so that you're aware of it. Um, if you know of any developers or anything of that nature, you're free to share that with them. Um, and then again, once we get those summarized results, we will be sharing that with you, and then a more formal presentation will be through the Economic Development Committee as well as the select board. So the other update is just to let you know that we did have a technical review conference for nine thirty-two, nine thirty-four Salem Street. Um, there is a company that's looking at utilizing the space for contractor yard storage, so similar to what we saw from a planning perspective for the site, and the address is escaping me, but behind Nicole's Market, um, where they were looking to do kind of something similar with the contractor base and, and whatnot. They're looking at that particular site to open up something similar. So we met with all of the relative boards and committees, and it was a very conceptual, we're talking like a plan with post-it notes as to where they would place structures and things. So um, there were some conservation concerns. They're also located in the Neaquahfer Protection District. Um, and there's also endangered species, uh, blending and wood turtles on that particular site as well. So there would be some hurdles that they would need to cross in order to move forward with an application. Uh, we have not yet received an application, uh, but we are informed that they are, um, they intend to submit one. So that should be something that will be coming before both the zoning board and the planning board. Um, and if they can stay out of conservation, maybe not conservation, uh, but they will have to go through some state permitting with the um, Division of Natural Heritage. So stay tuned.
Cool. Thank you. Um, I'm good. Any, any other items not recently anticipated at the time of posting? No.
I have none.
Cool. You good? All right. Um, I did see that they are prepping for some um, hot topping on School Street, which is, which is good. It'd be, I think it's going to start maybe the end of the, this week and next week. I, I'm sure there's always red tape around all that. Um, so the townsfolk, it's vacation week, so people can uh, be prepared that there'll be some, some grinding and hot topping during the, during the week, during the day. Um, the, and the reason why I mention that is one eighty-one, I, when I saw that, I think to myself, one eighty-one hour School Street is needed to tap that water main prior to, um, because otherwise they'd have to wait for the five years or whatever it is. So um, I know there's an outstanding email to follow up and see if they're going to get it done, or it's, it's up to them. Um, but obviously, it has to be done prior to any type of street paving, so they're in a real short crunch time now if it's, if it's going to happen, so. Um, that was all I had. Um, did you have anything?
No.
Um, our next meeting is technically the town meeting on April twenty-eighth at six thirty at Bagnell Elementary School. Town meeting, um, we need a hundred people, so hopefully, I, I think I tell this story a couple of times, that my first year living here, I went to town meeting, and I was there probably fifteen, twenty minutes late. Um, realized, I should go, and I was the hundredth person. Um, and it was, it was an experience. It's like, wow, okay. So uh, so if, there's a lot of, we have the ADU stuff on there. We have MBTA zoning. There's a lot of different articles on there that need to be addressed, so hopefully, um, we have a new moderator. So hopefully, everything can go, go smooth, and we can get enough people to uh, get the ball rolling.
Last year, last year, we had to wait for the hundredth person also. There was probably ten, fifteen minutes delay, so get on out.
Yep. Um, and then for our, our next, next board meeting after the town meeting, I think that we'll just, we'll go back. Um, are you guys thinking, so that's the twenty-eighth, do we go right back to the beginning, first week of May? Do the first, we're trying to stick to the first and third, right? So it'd be May sixth, so we have it on, on record?
That's fine.
Okay. Jason, you good with that? And obviously, we're the only three of us here, but May sixth, work for you?
Yeah.
So um, we'll just throw that out there. And um, with that, I'm good. Entain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion made in second, um, to adjourn at seven thirty-eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you, Groveland. Good night. See you at town meeting.